I'm going to call the Loudoun County Commission Workshop for May 18, 2020 to order. It's got to be close to 6:01. So, the only person who wants to address the commission is Bo Carey. So, Bo, tell us what's on your mind.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Just want to give you a catch-up on 150 years Loudoun County celebration. We've had a few changes, as you can imagine. Mr. Chairman, you asked about that when I came in. But, I want to give you the quick and dirty. Over the next three or four weeks, we'll be sending out, I want to say, half a dozen news releases. One's already out, and there should be a story in the local papers this week. And it will basically be asking people the following questions. In 1970, when the time capsule was buried, were you there? Asking people to respond to our website, or by email, to our contacts, if you were, did you participate? What have you heard about it? It asks the questions, the logic readings. That's better than freelancing.
Have you been out of the country? Has anybody visited? Do you have a cough? Do you have a fever?
I think you're talking about a different topic, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Our press release, and obviously the radios will be, we hope, will share the message. Were you there in 1970? What do you remember about it? Did you put something in the time capsule? What stories has your family told you about that time? And do you have any pictures you can share from 1970? Now, obviously, what we're really trying to do is harvest that information, that when it's time to share the contents from 1970, that if any family members have claims on it, or if they can help identify it, that would be very instrumental in what our committee does going ahead. So, look for that this week, that information. And if any of you were there in 1970, or if your great-grandmother told you something, that she put a lock of her hair in an envelope and wanted you to have it, then we'll try to facilitate that. Secondly, our coloring book is just about done, and Cindy Benefield and Ms. Chris Peterson from Loudoun High School, Cindy is from over in Greenback, serves on our committee, they have put together a wonderful coloring book with about 36 different sites throughout the county that young children will be able to enjoy, and young adults can enjoy it too. Everybody likes a coloring book. We've also been, in order to fund ourselves in this project, we've been trying to sell what some of our committee members call swag, but it's all sorts of memorabilia. And I think everybody that's interested in history and in Loudoun County celebration should consider buying one. Beverly Sweeney's done a great job with that, and Beverly's here. She represents us in Lenore City, works at the Lenore City Museum. This is just, we got about eight or nine different items that we sell: medallions, keychains, badges, what else is on there?
Couple Christmas ornaments, a magnet or a fridgering magnet, this large pan. It had little helmets, but it seems to dislodge.
So, those are available at the shops on the square. I'm not trying to self-promote here, right over here on the next corner. I think Beverly's trying to find a place in Lenore City and Greenback we can also sell them. We were doing it through the Loudoun County Visitors Bureau, but I guess they're still shut down, aren't they? I suppose. If not, they'll be up and running, and we're doing okay with that. So, that's our swag. So, here's the biggie. Ruth McQueen's here.
That's behind.
Yes. So, I know that Commissioner Brewster and Commissioner, which, I think Commissioner Tinker, were concerned, and modestly should have maybe waited until the June 20 event to dig up the time capsule. And with everything going on, and bottom line, Henry, we're not going to have a big public event on June 20. Imagine that. So, we did, I think maybe Kelly said, "We don't want to have a, we want to have an aha moment." Or maybe that was you, Commissioner Tinker, one of them said, "It'd be great to have an aha moment and a wonderful positive surprise on June 20." Well, not only is there not going to be a big rally here on June 20, but if we had done it, it would have been, what did you call it, Ruth?
An uh-oh.
An uh-oh instead of an aha. So, I'm here to fess up. We went ahead, Mr. Wilson from the Monument Company of Lenore City came down with our county historian, Darryl Tuck, and Ruth, and we went ahead and pulled it out, because we just didn't want to have any bad surprises. I didn't make that decision. Our group unanimously decided it was better to use some caution there. The good news is, if you're looking at your, and, did these, you got to get one there?
Yeah.
If you're looking at that, you'll see the bottom picture. That's what remained. The weather, the elements absolutely destroyed it. Absolutely. And it's so disappointing. So disappointing, but we're determined to make something positive out of it. Now, I know, we had, well, we salvaged a bunch of coins that people had put in.
Did we get any of those?
We will have the coins. They're not in your container. Nice try. Nice try.
Some of these ashes.
There's a couple of envelopes. There's something, we think, from the Wampler family in there, but we haven't been able to identify much more. Sorry, I know better than that.
Obviously not.
She's going to be mad later. So, we know there are some, there's a watch, there's a knife, there's a little toy truck, there's some paper items, there's a couple of dog tags. And we will have a nice aha moment on those when we identify them with.
Military dog tags, not for, no.
Exactly. Exactly. So, we've got those items, and we do want to reveal them to the public at the right time. Chairman, Mayor Bradshaw, I can't say, Mayor Bradshaw was notified within two hours of us getting the bad news. We didn't want it to come back and surprise him. We did ask him to keep it in confidence, but we thought he, as the mayor, should know about it. And so, until we can make plans to do something about it. And so, I do appreciate you keeping that confident this time.
No, no, he was bribed. I promised him brown.
Yeah, he was sworn under oath to do that, and I appreciate it.
Word got out pretty quick.
I'm sure. You don't have people down here in the middle of the day, did, a hole in the.
The whole annex was.
Yeah, there was no giant secret going on.
All right, so I'm the only one that believes that. But anyway, we do want to have an event, a virtual event. I've talked with Chip here about possibly doing something on the 20th, because that's what our predecessors 50 years asked us to do. We'll invite Mrs. Benny Stafford, her husband, who's deceased, of course, was the chairman, and Dr. Paul Breakable, and Harvey Sproul, who were his co-chairmen, to be involved. I'm sure the mayor will probably invite this group and our committee. But other than that, we can't have a big social gathering. So, we'll be spread out as far as we can on the courthouse lawn with an alternative rain date, so that we can have a virtual event, or whatever you call it, something to honor that dedication. But our plan is to, at that point, is when, that's the date that we would like to be showing everybody.
What date?
June 20, I'm sorry. June 20, 10:00 a.m.
Right there. And why can't you have people?
Well, things may change by then.
Well, Friday, everything changes.
Okay. Well, I mean, we're going to meet before then and come up with whatever alternatives we can, but we still want to have a huge rally with the new contents. And so, we want to, we're thinking, the longer we delay it, the better chance we can have a huge rally in the fall, where we then would have collected all the new contents for a 2070 time capsule. That makes sense? And we would display the old as well between now and then. So, we want to have an official event, an official event to honor the compacts we have with the 1970 group on June 20 at 10:00 a.m., hopefully here at the courthouse, unless it's raining, we'll have an alternative place. Then we want to, let me not get ahead of things here, I've got about two more items to report. We want to have a big event with the new time capsule late in the year. One of the next press releases that we'll have coming out will be talking about that new time capsule. The Greenback Historical Society has sponsored that project. They've come up with some very good protective-type envelopes. They've come up with a template, so that if a second grader wants to write something now, and knowing he's got a better chance than some of us do at being there in 50 years, then that second grader can have some suggestions in the template. You know, what's your favorite color? What town are you born in? What would you say to somebody 50 years from now? Lots of other people won't need that kind of prodding. They can put whatever they want, a family picture. I thought a great idea, and Mayor Bradshaw told me, says, "I want to write a letter to whoever's mayor in 2070." Well, that's a super idea. But.
Getting that, though.
He'll get somebody to write for it.
By 2070.
Yes. So, that's our plan, and you'll be seeing that. That recommendation will be coming out in a press release, but we'll have, they can both snail mail it to the Greenback Historical Society's address, or email it to 150yearsofloco@gmail.com. So, we'll have two ways people can submit these. We would ask those in the room, and I'm sitting here next to a press person, so I probably shot myself in the foot already, that we not go too public with the information about the old contents. We don't really want to make a big deal about that until we get, second week of June, right before we have the official event. We've talked about having a traveling road show, putting those contents in a glass case, show them off at the Lenore City Museum for maybe a month, Greenback Museum, maybe in the county building, somewhere down in Philadelphia, somewhere in Teleco Village, and do that, you know, just to let every community come in and look at it. But then, we hope to have something much bigger going on after that. So, we would ask that we not go too, let's don't get too public with that if we can, and let our information, our official press release come out here in a couple of weeks, around the second week of June. Here's the biggie that I want to throw at you. Are there any questions so far on what you've been given? That shows Mr. Wilson's crew digging, it shows the condition of the capsule was awful, and then we brought it up.
Bo, one recommendation I would say to the committee, do away with concrete vaults and go with more of a vault, a burial vault or something like that, and you'll be foolproof, because the use of the vault, that's where you have a lot of water damage and other factors destroying that material.
Well, let's talk about that.
Money, now you want money.
No, I want to throw something at you. And that is, we, Darryl Tuck, our county historian, started looking into about a month ago, because of the disappointment of the weather, into an above-ground vault, a mausoleum, some different possibilities. The funeral homes are pretty much going to help us, they're going to sponsor something like that in terms of, but we would like it to be above ground. And Beverly and some of the folks on our committee at our last meeting came up with a wild card. That is, we would like to put the old, the new vault, which could be huge, or it could be all compacted, just a bunch of envelopes, in the old courthouse. Display it there for years and years. Then take the small glass case with the contents of the 1970 for display, what's left, and maybe put that on top of it. We would like this body to think about this over the next month, whether you think that we could do that. I was telling the mayor, when you, if you go to Blount County Courthouse, it's like a museum in there. It's not meant to be, and we don't want our courthouse to be a museum. But there's different places, as you walk around the halls and go down into the annexes, where you see old memorabilia, or plaques, or statues, or art about the history of Blount County. And so, what we're saying is, if we can find a little nook or cranny in a corner, in a hallway, along the wall, in the courthouse, where when people come and visit, they'll see, "God, this is cool. This is the stuff that they put in in 1970." And this is the stuff that's going to get dug up in 2070, or not dug up. But we would like it, number one, above ground. Number two, we would like this group to consider placing that in the courthouse, once it's done. I know there's space issues, but we would be, we're glad to come up with the containers and whatnot to make that happen. Don't want to argue tonight, I'm sure y'all don't want to either, but I wouldn't like you to take that under consideration. And here's the, I know that I rose a little firestorm with Susan's office, because we discovered that the old charred beams that have been taken out by a construction company, and some huge steel rods, which I assume were stabilizing rods, have been taken out. And Susan knows the law. She informed me, said, "Well, yeah, but we're supposed to dispose of things, you know, I guess salvage materials at that auction. There's a process," and I understand that. I didn't understand it until she explained it. But we were saying, "Oh, we'll take that and make souvenirs and stuff out of it." And then, when she informed us of the law, then we said, "Wouldn't it be cool if we could take some of that material and make it into the display case that could possibly go in the courthouse?" And that's, we're still willing to do that. I don't know if this body, we as individual citizens, I understand, can't just go get that. If it has to go to auction, we'll try to buy some of it, if that's what has to happen. And then we'll make our cases, if you decide it's something worthy of putting in the courthouse. Okay? So, that's a mouthful. We would like you to consider putting the new vault in the courthouse. It could be a vertical deal, it could be down under the floor, with a new vault on top. We think you can make a wonderful cabinet, and I think some of our committee has already come up with some sketches, but we think you can make a wonderful cabinet out of those materials that were possibly in the original courthouse 148 years ago, the steel rods and the old charred beams. Failing that, we can come up with a brand-new, state-of-the-art one that doesn't have that historical reference. But either way, we would like you, at your next meeting or at your next workshop, however the proper, Henry, the proper protocol for that is, to consider the old and new time capsules going in the courthouse. And any questions? Does everybody have our contact information? Anybody need it?
Just a little while ago, I told the mayor over here, if I was in charge of the world, I'd take the chainsaw, cut them beams up in one-inch slices, and sell them ten dollars a piece. You make a lot of money. Sell everybody a piece of the old courthouse, ten bucks.
Well, we'd love to do that, but there's a process.
We can do anything we want to.
You all vote to do that.
Yeah, we can do what we want to do.
That's one thing, giving it away is something.
Yeah. Our committee, if our committee's given through the proper law, I'm not going to run it, Susan, because she knows her stuff, believe me. We would gladly, we have the people with the chainsaws that are ready to go with it, whether it's just to build a cabinet, or whether it's to also come up with some other, am I speaking out of turn here? We're prepared to do that. But again, we want to abide by the proper process and not violate anything. I mean, on the one hand, we are a delegated and approved body of the county. We're not a body, we're an appointed bunch of volunteers. But we are prepared to do as much of that, and we're not wanting money to do it. We'll do the work. We'll make the cabinets, we'll do all that, if we can get a hold of those materials. If we can't, we'll build them out of something new and won't look back, you know.
Susan, would I have to go to purchasing community?
If the materials stay inside the county government, that's a decision that can be made in-house. If you start selling the materials to the public, then it would have to remain in the house, county house. But if you go selling it to individuals to make souvenirs out of, then that would have to go to public auction.
What if you ask for a donation?
Pardon?
What if you ask for a donation?
I'd be the last question, Susan, on what she's saying. I fully believe that this body, if we want to say we can give them love, we can give them love.
Well, in her defense, when I first went at her, it was about the $10 souvenir slices, okay? So, I was thinking a little greedy, and that's when she had to look at it.
Obviously, you and I have a good beginning.
Yeah, and that's where I was going at it then, and that was before the committee said, you know, there's a better use for it.
But Susan, would we in-house use those materials to build a cabinet and things like that? Where would we need to start with that?
You all can choose to use those materials to build a cabinet.
So, would that just be a workshop, or does it need to come before purchasing before?
I've had a conversation with the mayor about this, and so, you all can choose to build a box out of that, because that box would remain inside the county. Surplus Property Committee, if you want, start to want to sell it. Here's the thing, if I left those logs down there and let, normally when you demo something, the construction company disposes of the materials, the old materials. They do not have, because they're taken to a landfill, they're taken to a dump. But if you want to start salvaging things out of the old courthouse, and it's going to be, those items are going to be sold, or you can't just give them away to John Doe.
Right.
You can choose to make a box out of it, because it's going to remain inside the county courthouse, it's county property. But if you want to start selling slivers or slices of it, that's something that would probably have to go to the surplus property authority and just go through the proper channels. Mayor, do you have any comments?
Could we vote to sell $10, could we vote to have this committee or sell $10 slices of the coin?
We can do that. My whole idea, of course, we have two different people, is how we've been about this point, understand them. They would like to cut them up into sections, and engrave or burn, you know, 150 anniversary, look really good.
Now, is this this group you're talking about, or just your private entity?
There are some others.
There's several now.
Well, they're not even in consideration, these people, are they?
Well, they're not now, even though they're not officially under the Loudoun County umbrella, but the Loudoun County Historical Society.
Are they under the Loudoun County umbrella?
That may be a lawful question, Mayor.
Well, if they are, then they're us, and they can do it.
They may as well.
Yeah, when we came to you in the first, at the beginning, we asked that you approve us as the Loudoun County 150-year Celebration Committee, and you did. And I mean, not.
But is that a committee required by state law?
Come on, man. Tell the contractor to give it to them. If you're salvaging, the contractor threw away, give it to them. Boy, the whole problem's there.
Could you take it to your farm, and say they disposed it?
Absolutely. Dump it out there, out in the side of the road, and then you come and give it.
They could take it, put it on your farm.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And then they can go work.
Absolutely. I'll help them, I'll help them.
Open the tractor and the wagon.
I've got a tractor, man. Well, surplus, settle for a dollar a piece, limit one per customer, and that way we know we're right in state.
I mean, it does help us avoid.
How many are there?
There's not a lot out of all.
There's about four or five big beams down there, then there's a couple of steel rods in there.
So, can we vote the first of June to sell them?
That's my question.
To give them to the historical people.
For dollars?
Give them to them.
Susan, is that what?
For nothing.
Can't we do?
I'll give them the dollars.
How much trouble will we get in?
Four dollars worth.
Well, y'all can research that between now and that meeting.
Historical society.
Yeah, we can take that up point now and then.
You can donate surplus county property to a nonprofit organization at the Will County Commission.
Or to ourselves, because they're a county-appointed committee.
Yeah, they're also a nonprofit organization.
There you go. Problem solved.
If you choose to do that, we'll, you know, we're not asking you to build them, pay for them. We're ready to do the work.
Give us four dollars.
And so, yeah, okay, we'll have to check our treasure over here.
Fifty cents each for the rods.
We were prepared to go to auction.
I'll donate. I vote to donate, totally. 100%.
If we can, I'm fine with that. That's absolutely.
Are we going to donate those beams to them as a nonprofit?
Somebody may have to.
Donate to a nonprofit.
She said we have to vote first of June to donate it.
That's fine. We don't need them yet. But if you can, make sure it's legal, make sure it's apropos, and if you can do it at the June meeting, you know, after you do your homeworks, that'd be great. If it's not, we, we're, big concern is, how does this group feel about putting those monuments in the courthouse?
No, we're not going to have a courthouse for years.
I would like to see.
That's understandable. But we'll wait. We've waited 150 years.
I would like to see those materials used to build a cabinet or something for the courthouse.
There's enough for all, absolutely.
I mean, not just to sell all that spent off.
That's our main concern. That's our main concern. We're not looking.
And the cabinets.
Here's where you kind of get into questions. Is, so, say you build a cabinet, but then you've got 25 feet left over, and then you start slicing it up and selling it. You can still sell it as long as the funds are accounted for into county government.
Even if we've donated it to a nonprofit, they're out of our control, they're no longer ours?
That's a question I'd have to ask on, because I don't know about that.
You're donating to our historical society as a branch of the Loudoun County Government, as a committee of the Loudoun.
I don't sit proud.
The Loudoun County.
June 1, once you donate, it's done.
I agree. Or set it up on the side of the road for garbage, and we don't know whatever happened to it.
Well, now we do.
I mean, we are devoted to being self-funded. Selling little souvenirs and stuff helps us do that. We've been fortunate with some of these civic clubs and churches and individuals that have been very kind to us. The things we sell do help us do it, but our primary use, and I go back to Kelly, is the primary thing we'd love to do is to make that cabinet, if we can find a place in the courthouse. I understand it might be years. And we don't want to take away from the clerk and master, the county clerk's critical functions space, but we think that would be lasting preservation of our county. The notion of souvenirs would be secondary to being able to use those. I know Beverly even thought about taking those steel rods and making wind chimes out of them, but.
We're going to give it all to you, June 1, to Jersey.
All right. If you can do that, that's great. If you can't, we're going to keep moving.
Let me say what's going to happen. Susan, make sure we're legal, we're not getting into trouble. June 1, we'll vote on it and give it all to Bo's group. Fair enough?
I would like to see that we talk to Susan, too, and see if maybe there is a place that we can keep that in our mind as they start laying things out inside the courthouse, Susan, so that we can have just even a spot, or maybe putting.
If we bulldoze the whole thing down, start it all.
Susan, excuse me.
It's really a hot commodity to get the old courthouse, when you put offices back in there.
That's going to have to be decided at a later date.
I'm just saying that might determine the size cabinets and things they build. They might need to build shadow boxes for the walls or something.
Just a clarification, there is a, we're not the Historical Society. There is a Loudoun County Historical Society, there's a Greenback Historical Society. They both contribute to our efforts. We are simply that temporary 150-year Loudoun County Celebration Committee, and we're at your disposal. All right. Thank you, folks.
Bo, thank you for all your work. It's just a shame that COVID-19 showed up.
Well, we're still going to make it work good, and we've got a great committee. These 10 people are just dynamite. They really, they come from a lot of different backgrounds, and they are great worker bees, especially these two right here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll update you later.
Put that on the agenda for June 1. Okay. Mayor Buddy Bradshaw, you're next, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have several boards and committees. If it pleases the mission, I would just, this one, again, June, second of June meeting, we adopt the budget. Equalization Board, myself and my camera, still trying to find that representative for it. Do y'all have a planning commission representative for my nation yet? Several of these are still missing. Some names, if it pleases the committee, or pleases the commission, I would just, I would be perfectly content leaving it there until June 25, three of the August meeting, for that matter.
Sounds good. Fair enough.
But I have a question. One of them we can't, we can't avoid. The ones that expire at the end of June, it's got to be dealt with. And of course, the big, the big missing link here is, is the Julia Hurley seat on TCCA. And she can't go back on TCCA till her residency issue's been resolved in one form or the other. Mr. Duff has represented us on that board for the years I've been here. He's always done it. And last year, for whatever reason, she really wanted to be on it, and we put her in addition to it. So, June 30, the last day of June, Mr. Duff retains his seat. She's off. That will be my recommendation, my vote. The rest of them I could care less about.
I'd be glad for somebody to take my place.
That's yours, you're staying, you're not going nowhere. We're not going to have that argument this year. That's what got us in the mess last year, right there.
Do you want to carry that one over to June 1?
That one... This needs to be voted on June 1st.
Okay.
The rest of you do whatever you want to do.
I'll present it as... I'll leave that alone as it is, like commission sign. After litigation, we have a commission to vote it out of the state.
There's no litigation about committee enforcement.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
That's the beauty of having a...
It's got nothing to do with committee enforcement. That's a residency issue.
Now, let me have this question.
I'll put it on June 1st.
I do have one addition, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Dr. Susan Harrison, has she sent you that email, Tracy?
Yes, she did.
Okay. The... Just as we were leaving, as we were at committee meetings, she got a... She had a quote come in for a trailer for the election, which would be a little bit of an all-purpose budget, in event of emergency, whether it's COVID-related, or storm-related, or whatever related. She has a bid in for $6,200 for a trailer. That's the first quote. So, we know higher than that. We'll get pricing around, but she has requested that this commission would entertain the purchase of that trailer. It's a four-week out, delivery on it. But she'd like to have that voted on, just in the event we need it. It could be a temporary voting place, for that matter.
Is it to move her...
Problem solved.
Moving her...
Oh, I knew it, COVID.
Vowing machines, moving her machines.
When solid, when machine... The vendors issue.
PPE, no.
You said temporary voting place.
The lock-in strike, so where were you gonna move it?
You're gonna have it down vendor.
And this is a... I believe this vendor was a local company. I believe this vendor was a local company.
Yes, it is a Loudoun County company.
Where?
Over here. And we'll get quotes from...
Smoke, you have them.
Yeah, we'll get quotes on the other side of it.
Tracy, can you put it on that COVID deal that we talked about this afternoon?
Right.
Is that where the money's coming from?
Well, doesn't she ask?
It's a possibility.
Probably reimbursement.
Right. We'll have to pay for it.
But then get the money back.
And they are reviewing purchases, case by case. So, we'll submit it, and we'll see if we get reimbursed.
I think we have proven if we're gonna be reimbursed...
We don't know until...
It's done.
I mean, we have to buy it.
What if...
I said to see what's in it?
Say...
Where'd this idea come from, Al?
She's been working on it, and just the bid coming, we didn't know if we'd even get it. She got a quote coming in just as we were leaving.
So, there are one bid coming, it's...
Well, that's the price.
I haven't seen this publicly bid anywhere.
Well, you don't have to bid it, per se. She got a price, and wanted to give us a...
Something to look at.
Yeah. A baseline, so to speak. It may be less than that, but we know it won't be more than that. And, you know, what if something... Everything goes back to sleeping COVID. Something happens at the Teleco Village Church.
Hurricane is a hurricane. Hurricane.
Well, if the light-in strikes the Teleco Village Church, you can't vote there. You gotta have somewhere so it can possibly be used as a mobile. Nothing beats permanent, but this would definitely be in an emergency.
Mobile? We could use three times a year, could we? Problem solved, please. I don't know why a trailer... If we get the money back, I'm fine with it, but...
It's if you... But she said she knew she'd like to... This commission would entertain it.
Why didn't she have the budget 30 minutes ago?
She didn't have it yet.
Just came in.
She came in...
But I mean, we haven't heard a word about this.
She's been working on the price for it. That's why I went to the workshop. I could sit and run a vote once in a while. I could have her send out information, news is on it as well, before the June 1st meeting.
Okay, you want it on the agenda?
Please.
Under Susan Harrison or the mayor?
Yeah, put it on your mind, that'll be fine. I'll have Susan send out some information.
Okay. We got it.
$62,000.
All right.
69.74, something like that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Kelly Bruce, tell us about the courthouse committee.
Well, with everything going on and things, I know that we had... You were very supportive in forming the courthouse committee group. And this is on there just to go ahead and dissolve that group, so that it doesn't hold up any kind of work on the courthouse.
How many meetings y'all had?
Seven. None.
None. We have none at this point. I think with a lot of the changes that are gonna be in effect, that committee is not gonna be necessary. So, it's on there just...
Okay, we voted on that at a commission meeting, so we're gonna have to take it off on June 1st. Okay.
Unvoted.
Unvoted.
Unvoted. Okay. All right. Is that it, Kelly?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Jack Walls, tell us about the Economic Development Agency.
Part of your last meeting, you took a vote to pass a pilot for Project Strength. It was brought to my attention that we need to have a resolution attached to that. I apologize for that. In your packet, you should have a resolution to that effect.
It's fair.
So, that's what I'm here tonight to discuss.
Okay. So, we have to vote back on it on June 1st?
Yes.
Okay.
Just a resolution, Chris?
Just a resolution. That's right.
Okay. All righty, we'll put it on the agenda for June 1st.
Thank you.
I've got some questions. Go ahead with yours.
Go ahead.
Jack, I just wanted to get... Can I get an official list of who's on the IDB board and how they are elected? Because I know that I had heard that there's some people that have passed away on that board.
Yeah, there is actually an email that went to every one of you that had that list on there. That came off the comptroller that submitted annually, the IDB.
Who replaced the...
Yeah, but...
That one individual has not been replaced yet.
So, how are the...
It's appointed by the... I'm sorry.
How are they placed on that board?
By the mayor.
Okay.
Did you do that recently?
What's that?
Put those people on the IDB board?
I've changed one person in my four years, six years. I think it's Jay Wampner, that was on it.
He died.
And then Mike Webb went on it, for Wampner's Construction. Mr. Wampner's name is still on it, and I have not replaced him yet.
That they confirmation...
You know how long... How long are their terms on that? Do you know?
That's a good question. Did we confirm those days?
Mike Webb, we did. The rest have been on there for ever how long. Very rarely do we have a piece of property actually.
Isn't that... I mean, 40 years? How long has it been since I've counted?
That's my understanding. It's been a while. It wouldn't have acted for a while.
This is the Loudoun County IDB.
You have a listing?
Is there a way that we can find out how... What the terms are on this, and how this committee is...
Is this it? Industrial Bond Development Board?
That's it.
Mel Hyde.
What's his expiration date?
September 2020.
For all on September 2020?
Well, no. Ted Wampler Jr. is 2020. Tom Myers is September 2020. James Thomason is September 2021. Jim Curtis is September 2021. Nancy Beatty is September 2021. Bruce Martin is September 22. And Mike Webb is September 22. And there's one open one on Panel A.
That was submitted to... I think that was submitted to everyone's staggered one or commissioners by email.
You got 2020, 2021, 2022. So, whichever panels, I...
But where are the terms on that? How that board was developed?
Four-year terms?
This says six-year on the paper that...
There you go, six-year term.
Six-year term. It's usually... I assume it's in the packet, because there's usually a great big... I've never changed anything but mine, so it's probably not a great big list we approved at the end of... I'm assuming that works soon to be broken down.
I just wanted to see the language on the development on that.
Jack, do you have that? Because I don't. I would have a clue.
I'm sure there's a... In a box somewhere, there's probably some information about that. I'll try to see if I can locate it.
Committee itself is...
1969 or something like that. It's been a while, so...
1903.
Well, this one, we've done a number of these over the years. This one's the first one I've ever seen that comes with no dollar amount. It's a fixed... Or at least what I'm reading, it's a fixed 50% of whatever their adware or whatever property taxes are.
Most of that... We can put it in there if that's the way you would...
Well, the one we voted on last time, when it was just kind of the highlights, it had a fixed dollar amount in it.
Which one was that?
That we voted on in March.
Was 300 some odd thousand?
No, it was 50 something.
Yeah, so what you would aim to collect is 39,608.
Well, that's not what this said.
But it goes in the pilot documentation. This is just to give the...
And that leaves me to the next part. This one gives... Takes everything away from this body and gives it off to the IDB board to decide. If they got together and decide they want to completely do something different, we're handing it off to them to make decisions. We don't have a fixed anything here.
We can add that to it if it's...
50%. 50% based on what they're claiming they're gonna do is gonna be way more than $39,000.
Well, based on the 16... It was $16 million was the investment, the total investment. That... When you break that down by 50%, it comes out over a five-year period. What you do is you take and divide that five-year and do a fixed rate, which comes out to $39,608. That was the information that I provided you at your workshop, and also was at the...
If you do the math on the property taxes and investments, the property taxes without pilot would be $107,000. If you do the 35% partial property and the 40% on the real property, you're looking at $107,000 a year. So, 39,000, not 50% of 107.
I'm not sure what those numbers are. I mean, I'd like to look at them. But either way, I think if something this commission wants to put in the documentation, then I think it's something we can do.
Your last one said, all we need to do is we need to know what we're doing. Essentially, this document, we're just giving it to the IDB board, and they do what they want.
I disagree with what you're saying, but the legal terms are always... You're affirming that this is what you want to do, and then the IDB is the one that puts the legal documentation together to the company.
And that's a little scary. I don't remember them being elected to nothing. I got an answer for what they do.
Most of your IDBs are.
$16 million. If you do the math on personal and real property, it comes out that their property taxes would be $107,000 a year. This document that you gave us tonight says they're gonna pay 50% of whatever the adware taxes are, the property taxes. So, 50%, that would be 103 and a half thousand, 53,500,000 dollars a year. But your document says 39,000. We can't leave it hanging wide open for what it's gonna be. We need to know what they're gonna be paying for the next five years. So, when we're doing Tracy's budgets with Tracy Ware, she has a fixed amount of money that's gonna be coming in from this company.
Did you put the... In your calculations there, is there depreciation rates?
There's no depreciation rates.
Well, the personal property just starts depreciating year two, so it would start depreciating.
But it wouldn't appreciate that much in three years.
But that number's not correct either. So, I'd like to go back... I mean, I'm more than willing to put, if this commission wants to have a number in there, in the documentation for the resolution, I'm more than willing to put that in there. But I don't think that number's right either. I'd like to go back and crunch the numbers.
I would definitely go back and crunch them. We just... We need to know what's coming in. Tracy gives us a document each year that says pilot. Here's how much this is pilot. Here's how much this is, so on and so on. And if you just leave it a moving target, if they decide, eh, we're just gonna grow hemp weeds in, we're not gonna bring out equipment, we'll change our mind, we could be looking at them paying $10,000 a year.
That's kind of switchgrass. Yeah, I agree with you. So, but this is really the reason we put clawback provisions, that if they don't meet the claw... If they don't meet these numbers of employments, then we don't... They have to go back and play.
Employment doesn't have anything to do, though, with what they invest in their building and their personal property.
But they've got five years up until investing that amount, too.
So, they could wait till four and a half years before they put any of that in.
That's right.
So, they could pay $10,000 property taxes for four and a half years.
Possibly.
That's not a good deal for Loudoun County.
Well, since you're only collecting $20,000 right now off the building and the land, that's still a good deal. So, you're almost doubling what you're claiming today.
If they do what they say.
Or, or the deal goes south and no one goes in there and you're collecting twenty thousand dollars off the building.
They're already there.
That don't mean they got to stay there.
Are they there?
I can't answer that.
You can't answer whether or not they've moved in and started doing their thing?
No, I can't. I'm, I'm, no, I checked on them.
I don't know where the wind goes. Y'all know what they've got piled. But this one is, this one's got a lot of strange things that we've never seen in a pilot before. It's just not.
Every pilot we've done, Ben, is all due, that every one of them are different. There's no cookie cutter to these pilots. Everyone in this room knows that.
They have a figure in them.
They can have a figure in them.
Jack, what was the number that was passed by this commission in March?
Thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and eight.
Eight. Thirty-nine, six oh eight?
Yes, sir.
For five years?
Yes, sir. Clawback provisions equal seven hundred and ninety-two dollars per position not created that would be collected annually.
Could you include that language in this pilot and resend it out also to the rest?
Absolutely, absolutely, sir.
Before we vote on it, June first, put the numbers in.
Okay. That's the numbers he, that he just referenced, correct?
Got it. Whatever it is. Will you put that on the agenda for June first?
I just had two quick questions. What about the property on Center 75 that we get sold recently and they're supposed to build the road in, you know, that we have money put back? What's the update on that right now? I mean, are they, they're still here, coming?
They're, they're still coming, yes. Uh, COVID-19 has put a lot of, of delays on a lot of projects, and this is just one of those delays.
So.
We're not required to construct a road until the tile isn't, that's.
Yeah, I know, I knew that, I knew that. I was just wanting to know the update on them and if they're still here and coming. Because I know we have collected the money from that, so. And one more question. Center 75, have you been out there lately?
No, ma'am.
Who's responsible for the median? Is that the city, um?
It is the city.
Okay, well, the grass is kind of hot.
I'm playing to your local city council.
I think I know one.
And I think you know one.
I did want to know if it was the city's.
Yes, it's the city's right of way. Prior, prior to, year before last, the, there was, uh, the billboard money that was coming, uh, the revenue generated from the billboards were, uh, being paid to someone to mow. But it's a city right of way and the city should, uh, have asked the city to take care of their own right of way.
Right, because the member who did the board did not need to go for this money.
Which basically, we were losing money is what was happening.
Exactly, so it is the city's responsibility. Thank you.
Any more questions for me?
Thank you, Jack.
Thanks, Jack.
Susan Husky, tell us about copier contracts and mail machines.
So I have one minute to just give a little bit better explanation of the request for the beans, just since I've got all y'all together. When you have multiple people in a community asking for things out of the old courthouse, the way the state law looks at it as that belongs to the taxpayers because the taxpayers paid for it when it was constructed back then. When you have multiple people asking and you choose to give it to somebody, you've got to have something of substance to be able to explain that. All I'm suggesting is that if you choose to give it to somebody that is not a nonprofit organization, which are historic, not historical, but this committee is not a nonprofit organization. So you're choosing, you as a committee, uh, you as a commission can choose and vote to give any piece of county property to a nonprofit. But when you start giving it to somebody that's going to make a profit off of it, you have to have some accountability as to where that money's going to. And does that, what that money's going to be used for, so does that money come back? The unused portion of that money that's left over from this event, where does that money go? Who gets that money? Because that is a profit that has been made off of selling courthouse material.
But there are a range of us that will really get into our selves.
If it comes back into the county budget.
Well, we'll just put it for the.
If it does not come back to the county budget, then it is.
Could we trade those pieces for a cabinet made of those pieces?
You could.
Is that the claimest way?
You could. For instance, Greenback School, when we hired, um, Harry Gilman to tear down Greenback School, he gives us a price to do that. When he gave us a price to do that, he then, as he tore it down, he then had right to claim the materials that he tore out of that building. He sold brick to well-known people in our community that now have a patio made out of that brick. But that was part of, when you, so when you hired Johnson and Galyon to restore and remove all of the, um, debris, right now, those beams are considered debris and they're considered trash to Johnson and Galyon.
But not to us.
Johnson and Galyon could haul them off and put them in the dump and county government, Loudoun County government would be totally free and legally clear of those beams. But when you start pulling.
Why can't Johnson and Galyon give it to them? It's theirs, it's debris. Johnson and Galyon say, y'all come around and get this off our yard. Can't they do that?
When we start giving it to various ones and you've got multiple people that want it, then that's when you have an auction and put it up. But you can vote to give it to them, you would just have to have a, an accountability of the funds that are left over. Where do those funds go? You understand what I'm trying to say?
So we have two options. We can tell Johnson and Galyon to scrap it and give it to them, or we can say, you all can have it, but if you have any money left over when you're done, we got to know where it's at.
And I'm just laying out what your legal obligations are, and then you all can choose to do whatever you need to do.
If you need to tell Johnson and Galyon, scrap it and give it to them, they don't necessarily have to.
But I bet they would.
He's got a brother-in-law that's into woodworking and all of a sudden, we don't have anything.
You know, I called Johnson and Galyon and said Loudoun County would like to salvage those beams. So they pulled them out and left them for us to salvage. They did not have to do that.
Oh, okay, so you've already had that discussion?
Huh?
You've already had that discussion with Johnson and Galyon?
Yes, yes, yes.
I was going to say legally, they belong to Johnson and Galyon.
Legally, they belong to Johnson and Galyon.
We sell them for a dollar a piece, limit one, if there's, if there's any other problem, you go through it again and then we can get rid of them for.
I mean, I don't have an issue personally, if we want to give it to the historical society to build a cabinet. But I don't think, I think once the cabinet is complete, you have to figure out something to do with what to let.
Yeah.
But that's why we have a brief, we're not going to advertise on that bill a little bit, right up here on courthouse law.
Yeah.
We can cut it up in this, we can both cut it up in the sections for that matter.
So, I mean, if they're willing to build a nice cabinet out of whatever they need, I, I think you're good to give them the, the product to do that.
And my hard word is look up a government.
Three years in a row, we've got this little thing to say is, claim on. I want fourth one.
I agree.
I'll give you a clue, you're not going to get all the finding on that one.
I think once people figure out that you're selling them, people will come and say, there's going to be a lot of upset people.
When you get a lot of upset people, citizens that start complaining and calling and whining, then you can, you can stir up a protest.
This has to be sealed his discussion. I've been involved in this.
I'm just putting it out there. Now, I don't have a dog in this race. You all are the legislative body, so I'm just.
The problem comes down, Bo's group is not a 501(c)(3) operation.
They're us.
They're us.
So that's what I'm saying, man, is when you give them the county commission, they didn't have to be accountable for the findings.
If they sell these, are they going to come to Tracy?
Ask Johnson and Galyon who, if they would give them to the, to the hundred-fiftieth group. Ask Johnson and Galyon, would you all give your scrap to the hundred-fiftieth anniversary group? There's the first question that should be asked. If they say yes, we're done.
They'd probably say yes because they don't have to hold.
They're making, they're knowing what they're making out of this process over here. Just ask Johnson and Galyon, I don't care whose brother it is. Somebody ask Johnson and Galyon, if I have to all run there tomorrow and ask Johnson and Galyon, can they have those scrap beams for our hundred-fiftieth anniversary people?
Where, where you come into the problem is, is if a group or an individual makes a profit off of county property, so John Doe over here wants to buy.
But if Johnson and Galyon gives it away, that all goes away, right? That's behind us. So that would be the first thing, ask Johnson and Galyon.
I hope I've made myself clear. Okay, so, uh, multi-year copier contracts, um, it's just, we, after five years, we swap these copiers out. Little city is due for a, a, a new upgrade. They also, the machine is not large enough to handle their needs. So it is a little bit of an upgrade in quality as well. Employee benefits is the same. We're adding a, uh, a small one to the mayor's office at Anita's desk. And then we have the multi-year mail machine lease and general sessions. It is an increase of about a dollar fifty a month, uh, on that mail machine.
Total increase, all of them combined, is there very much for engine?
Uh, there is some. There's about sixty-seven dollars to the mayor's office budget.
That's for Anita to have one in her desk.
She got one in the little Hampshire, just about.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm all for it. She had to get up and go down the hallway and coffee.
And two, you have to keep in mind, there'll be a trade-off because you're paying more for this machine, but you also get free toners with it. Whereas right now, she's having to buy toners, so it'll be pretty much a.
You can buy new coffers, you can buy toner.
Yeah, we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan, it'll be on June first for a vote.
Thank you, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Susan.
Okay, Commissioner Shaver, tell us about the ninety-day moratorium.
We passed in March. Jim Jenkins tomorrow night, of course, with all we've had going on, I, I can't say a word no more. I can't say a word. All the crap we've had going on, of course, they've not had meetings, they've not had discussions. Tomorrow night, I think they've got a workshop at four-thirty, and I think he's going to give them his proposal. And, and what it was about, if you remember, it's, uh, we put a ninety-day moratorium on multi-family dwellings because there's some gray area whether or not the 2.5 applies to multi-family or it doesn't. I think when, but at least when I passed it, I thought it applied to everything we were doing. Jim thinks it does, but the language is vague enough in one of the paragraphs somewhere that it might need adjusting. So he has his proposal that he's planning to make to them tomorrow night. Ultimately, they will make one to us. We will make it back to them. Y'all remember how it works. So all I'm asking is we extend the moratorium for another ninety days, given that we've not even, have had meetings and stuff.
June first?
Yes.
Okay.
March, whatever March was when we passed it, so that'll, that should give us plenty of time to get it done after that. My second one is the question of our BCA, our planning commission, they have certain authorities. Uh, and I'm not doing this on behalf of Jim Jenkins, so don't, don't worry about Jim. They tell people they have to do things, they can't do things. If you do things wrong, you have to undo it. And if it's not undone in a certain amount of time, then you face a fine for not doing it. We have one right now that was told in, uh, November of 2018 that he had to take the roof off of his wall. He built a wall, it was going to be his wall, then he turned it into a pool house. And he built a roof, which is a violation of our regulations. It's been on, the roof has still been there now for five hundred and forty-five days. That's a fifty-dollar a day fine after his time's up. So he's looking at a twenty-seven thousand dollar fine for not building what the BCA told him. I don't know what the answer to this, but if we're not going to enforce this stuff, why do we have it? Why bother? So, I guess I'm looking for the mechanism, and I don't know what it is. How do we do it? Can Bob Bowman tell us how to do this?
And I'm just being lean against the property?
I don't know. I have no idea what it is. But right now, he owes twenty-seven thousand dollars for his fifty-dollar a day fines, and not only has he not taken his roof off, he's adding more to it. And I'm talking about Mark Mattel, I can't talk about. He built a pool house right on his neighbor's lot, old deed lot line.
He started on his neighbor's property.
Yes, and, and they made it move. But then he said it was just going to be a privacy wall, block the, uh, his pool, so he couldn't see into his pool. And then he went ahead and finished it all out and made a very elaborate pool house, and is now adding to it.
Both has a enclosed bathroom, kitchen, satellite.
Oh, I was, I was here the night the BCA dressed, and said, that's not a wall, that's a, that's a roof. Get it down. Get your roof off if you're going to leave the wall, not get the whole thing down. Get it done, nothing, but add it to it.
Well, don't they enforce that rule?
Well, they can. Jim Jenkins can enforce the rule. I don't know who enforces the rule. Laura wouldn't enforce the rule. Some say it has to be the mayor that enforces.
Bob Bowman said it has to be the mayor.
Was it Bob Bowman? Bob Bowman said it has to be the mayor that enforces the rule. Somebody needs to send a letter to this gentleman and say, hey, we need twenty-seven fifty.
And the roof down.
And the roof down. The fine don't let you get the roof off. I don't, I don't know the answer here, guys.
Has it been there five hundred and some odd days?
Five hundred and forty-five days.
There are two neighbors that are into it.
No, it's not, no, 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 that's wrong. These are two.
Let me go on. But that, now, and I'm not, I'm not, I don't have a side in this. I don't have a side in it. I can, I don't have a side, I can, I don't know.
Well, you should have a side because the BCA told him it was wrong.
But go ahead.
I don't have a side in it. So, the roof itself, is it in violation? Yeah, that's not in dispute. There's also a tree as big around as this, with a widow maker about this long, about that big around laying on top of the roof.
Is that not a problem?
If it, if it hurts somebody.
You know why that tree's dead? Because Mattlock dug up all the roots when he's trying to put it on Strunk's property.
That's simple, a hundred percent simple.
You're right, it is. So it's not our concern.
Not, not at all.
The dead tree's not our concern.
And so, I've talked to Mr. Mattlock about it. I'll reach out to him again. And, you know, I don't know, you know, apparently he has a daughter, a stepdaughter or something that's handicapped and also uses it out that area. The risk is, you know, if that, the one limb that failed, it could hurt somebody. And why, and now, and I don't know the neighborhood, like I said, they're in, they hate each other, none of my business, I don't know why. But, if you do that, you're also at a risk as well for somebody to get hurt.
Well, here's the deal, it's not a, it's not a, no matter who's what. We have regulations. Here's where I come from. The BCA says you have a five-foot setback from lot line, five-foot setback, if you build a building, minimum. Well, he built it on the man's line. But we're talking about a five-foot difference here, whether it's over here or what's over there. And he was told before he ever finished off his roof, don't build on that, on that lot line.
Furthermore, Mattlock put his pool equipment on Strunk's property, and it took lawyers to get that removed from Strunk's property.
Something happens, somebody gets hurt bad, who's that on?
It's nothing to us.
It's Strunk.
That's between them.
It is, but at the same time, let me see, let me try a mark again, see if I can get something.
There's not, you know Mark's not going to do anything.
I'll try again.
It's not right. I mean, this, this is just, here's where I come to. If we're not going to enforce one, we don't enforce any. We can just disband all that. We can't, we can't tell Commissioner Duff, he has to abide by BCA laws, but Commissioner Brewster doesn't have to. Think, he don't have to. It's got to apply equal to everybody.
You got to be rudely fair.
Rudely fair, all the way down the line. I, you take the names out of it. I've known all of them. Everybody's been involved since we were small children in school. I know all of them personally, got no angst with either one of them. But if we're not going to enforce one, we can't enforce any, because we just need to eliminate all the enforcement. I don't care about roofs and tree limbs, that's nothing to me. But our law says you can't build a building on somebody else's property line. And our BCA told him five hundred and forty-five days ago, get the roof off of it or get the whole thing down. And so far, it's been up yours. We're not.
But nobody's told me how you enforce that rule, does Bob Bowman?
Bob, Bob takes it in court. And the judge decides. And, and issues the fines, what?
Can the county think it says, where they, people would have to pay the legal figures for the county?
I don't know that. We got Bob on the table. But I don't think Bob, because Bob works for Bud. So Bob can't act unless Bud, Bud gives him the go-ahead. County commission doesn't have it.
Well, and Bob told me that we're the legislative body, he's the executive enforcement side of things. So we, we probably can't even do it, even if we hired an attorney.
That's probably true, too. My thing is, we're going to be one, we do them all. Not going to do one, we don't do any other.
All right, I'll be with Bob, I'll get the, I'll get Bob again, and I'll have some form of action ready for June first.
Yeah, I'm just going to defer that to June first until you give an answer. Okay. Gary Whitfield, looks like you got your problem solved with the trailer.
Yeah.
That's what I'm hearing. We are, uh, I'm not totally prepared to, uh, to introduce this yet. I'd like to try to move this to the June.
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth workshop.
Commissioner Collin, Adam had to request.
I need to leave.
I thought you were getting laid unless you told me.
It's like ten dollars per.
I don't know. I'll tell you what, a little.
I'll tell you all here, my wife is a respected child. Yeah, so.
Where are you going now?
Just a little out of the weather, so I'm going home.
Take care of her. Congratulations.
That was good, David, that was good.
See y'all.
See you, man.
Okay, so we're going to refer this to June fifteenth. Okay, you got that? Okay, last but not least, Tracy Blair.
Thank you, sir. I distributed, um, several documents prior to the meeting. The budget committee had a, an agenda with a lot of items on it. And so, um, there will be several things on your workshop for consideration. One is the Board of Education wants to utilize eight hundred thousand dollars of AFT funds. They have a five-year, um, building maintenance program in place, and they want to utilize part of that. This was reviewed by the Capital Projects Committee, the recommended approval as well as the Budget Committee. There are two resolutions to accept donations at the animal shelter. One is for cash and gift cards, the other one is for a five thousand dollar request. Acknowledgement of the new TCRS important contribution rate goes to a separate person, did not change. Uh, so it's the same, that it was several different grants. None of them have any matching funds. And some of them, one, two, three of them are related to COVID. It's related to the Gears Act. Approval of my bond. Then Commissioner Brewster earlier brought up Center 75. And Commissioner will remember back in, maybe September or October, there was a sale of property in Center 75. Two hundred and ninety thousand dollars of that is, has been set aside. That's the county's portion. Of course, that park was built, it was a, it was a joint project between the city of Loudoun and the county. There are still some expenses that have not been paid, estimating sixty thousand for road improvements that Commissioner Brewster referred to, as well as about twelve thousand dollars contingency. That, that seventy-two thousand dollars is still in Fund 119 for those purposes. But the balance was shared between the city and the county on the sixty percent, forty percent split. So the two hundred and ninety thousand dollars is what is the county's portion of that. But it's still in Fund 119 as, as we speak. The Budget Committee is recommending that those funds be transferred to the County General Fund and put, um, in a reserve so that it does not get comparable with other county funds and that's, then the county can take specific action on how to utilize those funds. So that will be on your agenda. Uh, I'll need a resolution for that, which you do not have, you don't have a copy of a resolution yet, but we'll get one together.
On that note, too, is there, do we need to address a time limit? To, um, Jack calls on that, too, because how long?
The contingency money?
Yeah, because how long do we have to wait before they build that road or was that in that resolution?
That should have been in that if we wanted to do it. I don't know if you could retroactively do it or not. I mean, it may be twenty years before they decide to come here now with COVID.
I thought they were going to pack the road up before they were away after construction.
No, it said it was in, I remember in that resolution, it was not until they actually started building and to see if they actually needed that road, because we made that discussion.
How much do we have, say, in contingencies?
Seventy-two thousand in this.
A total of seventy-two thousand.
Okay, because sixty thousand was for the road and twelve was for?
It was contingency, just in case the road cost a little bit more.
Sixty and ten percent, something like that.
And that's, that's seventy-something thousand dollars is part Loudoun's and part Loudoun County's, right?
Yeah, so I didn't know how long we got to sit on that seventy-two thousand before, oh, by the way.
Yeah, that was tied in. And what, anything left over, we have to split.
Yes. But how long do we hold it in reserve, waiting?
Forever.
Can't be forever.
It can be forever.
And then you have to find a resolution, some kind of agreement with us and Loudoun and probably the company, too. To say you've got five years, ten years, twenty years, whatever it is.
Maybe we need to look at that agreement with them to see if it's.
I think all three have to agree with it. That's true, and all three have to agree with it.
Well, I'm just saying, maybe there is something in there that says it, we only have to wait so long.
I don't remember nothing about that, but.
I know he does.
Been a long time since we saw it. We waited nearly ten years before we built the road in Tennessee, actually, there, Mr. Tracy Blair.
I, I, if I remember correctly, when that property, you know, during negotiations to sell that property, the idea was that it would happen fairly soon, that that road would be constructed. Uh, and that by this point, it would have already been done and the balance of any funds shared.
I think we were talking groundbreaking was supposed to be what, April?
Yes, the groundbreaking was supposed to be in April.
I've got a feeling the Chinese aren't coming real quickly now.
Uh, it's Japanese.
I don't think it's Japanese.
I think it was Chinese.
Chinese or Japanese?
Chinese.
Chinese, I understood.
I guess go back and read the resolution, see what it says, if you glean anything in there that was fresh or concerned by. I don't think there was any time limit in it.
So we'll have to leave that as contingency money for?
Ever.
To get a three-way agreement?
Well, Loudoun, Loudoun and Loudoun County might agree, but the company's not going to give up on that. I wouldn't blame it. I mean, that was in the, you know, purchase agreement. County will put their stakehold and put the road in.
Well, and I, you know, that's the thing about it, the longer we wait, well, it's like Simpson Road. Wait long enough, it's going to cost about twice as much, so.
Exactly, that, that's part of my point on this, too.
Yeah.
The interest rates are not going to cover that. The interest rates not going to cover that.
No, no doubt.
Oh, I'd say that's the Jack Quals banner. He'll be on top of it.
Can you, Mayor, I see you writing, are you
I'll shoot Jack an email asking if they know about this contingency money. If they still want it, they better get to moving. Don't know if I have any teeth in it or not.
Live the aisle for it.
Okay. The Budget Committee is also recommending a revision to our agreement with the City of Loudon for planning services. Just to refresh your memory, right now and for several years, for several years. There's a contractual arrangement between the county and the City of Loudon. They pay $25,000 per year to utilize the county's plan. Each year, the agreement, there's an amendment to the agreement each year because it only lasts one year. So every year, it's amended with a new date. A new beginning date and a new ending date. And it corresponds to the fiscal year cycle. The Budget Committee is recommending that for next fiscal year, fiscal year 2021, that the City of Loudon will pay 50,000 instead of 25,000, and that the county will not renew the contractual arrangement after the end of 2021, after June 30, 2021. It is something that needs to come before full commission. So the budget, that's the Budget Committee's recommendation. So it'll be on the agenda for the next meeting.
And most of all, our city planning is, I mean, most of all the planning is done by the city at this point. Is that correct? That a majority of our
I would say no less than half to be optimistic is, of the planning.
Laura, as Jim Bowe said, half their work in the planning office was the City of Loudon. The store, planning, BZA. We have to attend, well, we, but whoever the planner is, has to attend meetings. And then how this also factors in is we have not replaced the planner yet. Bud is working on that. And depending on what our workload is, depends a lot on what we need to hire to pick up the difference in what we're doing now. Where Jim's now the administrative head over everything. He's still not going to be officially planner.
So actually, Loudon City is getting a deal at 50,000.
Half a deal, half a deal at 50,000.
If we split it the way it should have been split, it would have been $85,000.
If they were paying for half the cost of the planning office,
$280,000 for that.
That'd be about $85,000.
Okay. So we're asking them to basically, this year, their contribution needs to at least go to 50,000, and they need to start looking for a new planner. I think that's reasonable.
Very reasonable.
Well, what are we going to do if we go out and hire a planner? You're going to have to continue to pay that salary.
You won't be paying that kind of salary, no.
Well, if you take away the city's contribution after next year, you still have a planner sitting there that now the county's going to pay for one of them.
Well, I don't know whether we're going to be hiring a planner.
That's just a question. Well, and the load will be lighter. You know, you may have somebody looking to move to a smaller department where, and salaries for planners, you know, are, are high. Whereas if we give somebody maybe looking to a smaller department, maybe somebody towards your career, we're looking at somewhere between 50 to 54,000 dollars annually. Overall, but it'll be solely for Loudon County.
And maybe even if it gets light enough, Jim might just say, okay, I can.
Jim said he's not
I know, I've talked
Because what we could pay a planner in these cities, too, they're not getting a deal. I mean, if you had to do, Loudon Cities and Loudon Counties planning, you're talking about a whole lot. You're talking about, what, 100,000?
For the load that this planning office saves and the size of it, you're looking at a hundred thousand dollar salary is what somebody could demand. But if you take away the city portion of that
You're looking at maybe
What do you have?
Half as much. Like I said, it changes, changes who and what you need. People, people committing to going to all the meetings and having to attend and prepare all the documentations for not just the county, but in fact, the city's doing just more than we've got. There's more going on in Loudon Cities than there is in County property.
I mean, that's what everybody's telling me. So I'm just asking what kind of, if you're not going to have a multi-year agreement with the city, I think you have to be real careful on what kind of planner you have. Where you're going to have a, a year from now, you're going to have an overpriced planner sitting there.
Well, we've got in the budget for this coming year $60,000, don't we? No more than 60.
No, no more than
Yeah. No more than 60, and you got Jim up to 64.
Start somewhere between 50 and 54, starting.
Yeah. So it's about the workload. And I think some, I think some in Loudon are wanting to do their own planning. I mean, we started this 2009. Little City, Little City went out on their own in 2009. And our planning commission ceased to be a regional planning commission. We still call it that, but it's not anymore when Little City came out. So when it ceased to be a regional planning commission, that would have left Loudon out in the cold. And we're talking 11 years ago now. And probably that time Loudon wasn't in a position to need their own force or their own planners, that sort of stuff. This many years later, they're way past a part-time, county doing part-time work. Or it's time, it's time for
The one risk you would have with a lighter load and lower you're going to probably find folks that are either in the start of their career or maybe more towards applying. And we may have somebody locally here that, you know what, that's not going to be a bad gig. But that's the only risk we're running. Maybe there might be some inconsistency as far as longevity of the tenure. But at the same time, we might find somebody, you know what, this is not that bad now.
Well, you freed Jim Jenkins up a little bit, too, to actually concentrate more on some of the county responsibilities where he's not been able to do that. He's been so overloaded.
And Jim, the code, my plan is if this commission approves, code's and plan will be one office again, and Jim Jenkins will be the supervisor.
Sounds good, man. But what, what this, actually, it was the budget prep conversation that this came up in. And I think Tracy is saying, rather than waiting until June 29th, that we vote officially. And then Loudon, of course, is going to holler, oh, we didn't know, we've done our budget, blah, blah. Well, of course, they do know. They've known for weeks what was coming because the Budget Committee voted on 200 weeks ago. So we're giving them a good 30-day notice of what's coming up in the next fiscal year, and then what's going to happen after that. So it's kind of giving a little more of a heads up than if we wait until
So they might be, so they can go ahead and finish their plan.
That's right, that's right. So, so it won't be in our, our 2021 budget when we adopt it at the end of June. So Tracy, I guess Tracy was the one who thought it was probably going to give them a heads up on that.
Were treated fairly.
I think very fairly.
Well, you're still getting them a deal at 50,000 dollars.
Absolutely.
Such an issue that it might, I don't, I don't know, it might require a lot of discussion. But there's another recommendation from the Budget Committee that came out of one of our prep meetings for next year's budget. And it's related to economic development. There is an interloped agreement in place. It's been in place for many years. I can't remember when it was adopted, but
2009.
2000.
That was the second version. 1998 was the first version.
I think we went back to the 98. And the county, the two cities, there's a small committee, the committee of 100, I think Little City Committee of 100, they all make contributions to EDA. And it seems that when that was originally written, the percentage of the contribution was based on the amount of industrial property in these areas. Basically, the county pays about 68% of that. Right now, the total budget is 235,000. And the county's contribution is 162,000. And, and a little bit of change, but that kind of gives you the comparison of what the county contributes compared to the total budget. I'm keeping my notes, I'm sorry. The Budget Committee's recommendation is to fund the 162,000 for the next two fiscal years. For FY '21 and '22.
We cut $12,000 out of it. Yeah, we said 150,000.
Oh, that's the second one. That's exactly right. That's exactly what I forgot. That just happened last week.
That's right.
So we went from 160,000. The Budget Committee's recommendation is to fund 150,000. And I don't have those notes in front of me. Two years. Then in the third year, go down to one-third the current total. One-third is 78,000. The third comes from, you all heard Commissioner Shaver say it for many, many years. Equal pay for EDA. So one-third, the total budget for each entity, is the, is the idea behind that. The interloped agreement addresses withdrawal from the home arrangement. It really does not address a reduction in, in, in any entity's contribution. There's, it doesn't address it, there's no provision for it in the agreement. So, but this is the recommendation from the Budget Committee. And that will need to be voted on by County Commission, and then the EDA board, the entities, notify if the commission approves.
And we're going to do that on June 1st.
Is the Budget Committee's recommendation, whether or not it's on the agenda, of course, it's
The same argument for Loudon, giving them a heads up, even though this is far less than the Loudon thing. But yes, yes, I mean, for however many years we've been doing this, and we beat this one dead in the Budget Committee. And we probably, I don't know if we ever really decided. If we decide tomorrow, we're just going to pay a third next year, maybe that flies, maybe doesn't, I don't know. So rather than have that fight, it does have the two-year provision if you're going to pull out. You give a two-year notice if you're going to pull out. Doesn't say you have to keep funding it, just says you have to give a two-year notice. So we felt fair to give the two-year notice that in two years, we're going to 73 whatever thousand dollars it was. We're going to pay one-third, Loudon pay a third, Little City pay a third. The EDA is just a nonprofit standalone like 911 or anything else. We make a contribution to the EDA every year. Jack don't work for us, they have a board. Commissioner Duff, Buddy Bradshaw's on the board, the other mayors and cities and that sort of stuff. So the argument again here is to give them a little bit of heads up. The 12-5 that we cut out, we don't know for sure if that'll fly or not. We cut it anyhow, we'll see if it flies. But the two-year notice that we're only going to pay a third, we'll see how that goes. That saves us an enormous amount of money.
We'll put that on June 1st.
So what, what was the, the cut?
From the requested 162,545.
101, I'm sorry.
162,545.
That one was cut.
That, that was their request. The Budget Committee's recommendation is 150,000.
$12,000 cut.
And I'll have to say, this year, working on the Budget Committee, we tried to look at a lot of things trying to secure a decent budget for this year and also to prepare for next year as well. Because we don't know what we're dealing with, with these economic times. And we're just trying to put as many pennies as we can into the pot and hopefully meet our needs now and next year as well.
So you're just going around cutting people
We have, we try to be
They have to make up for that, that's what you're doing?
We're trying to
That's what your recommendation is?
We're trying to position ourselves so that we can still provide services for the entire county. These were not the only two. We cut several others as well. Some were even more so.
It'll be paying people, too, in the process.
The 12-5 this year would be, allow EDA to use some of their fund balance. Our, our fund, as we're on the board, use some of our fund balance to cover the cost. There's, there's
You're forcing them to use the fund, fund balance for a cut if, that you've imposed on
If it's that much, because I think it's written how much in the red or how much in the black, they end up offering by the property sales. 12-5 was, 12-5, that is correct, right?
Close to, close to, right, 12-5 this year.
Okay. We'll put it on the agenda for June 1st.
You have a copy of a working home policy. It's a telephoning policy. With COVID-19. I don't think any of us, maybe somebody was. I don't think any of us were prepared to deal with something like this and to try to help protect employees and keep work moving. Several departments did a split on working from home. I'll speak for my department. We had several things in place, software to, so that we can have remote access to our desktops. But mainly, we didn't have this policy. We had no policy on this. I spoke with several counties. I spoke with CTS. I even spoke to the comptroller's office, who was already doing the same thing, and encouraged us to go in and do it, get something in place. But prior to year end, get the policy approved by County Commission. So what we have is a copy of the policy that we used. And now, according to what the comptroller said, we're bringing it before County Commission for approval for the purpose for which it served. The mayor has requested that this be reviewed just in case it has some gaping holes in it or something. It'll be reviewed by our county attorney prior to the next meeting. But this is the policy that was used by our department. It's written in a manner that any department head who is adhering, report to the mayor, it would apply to them, not necessarily to an elected official's office, unless an elected official wanted to tweak it so that it would apply to them. But what's before you is applicable to departments that answer to the mayor. The Budget Committee did not see this until this afternoon, that review. So there's no member of the Budget Committee that has had enough time to review it. Concerns were expressed. Are we opening up a can of worms? You know, is this going to be something that is abused? Normal questions. But at any rate, the Budget Committee did not have a recommendation because they really didn't have a chance to review it. So it's not before you with the recommendation from the Budget Committee. But it will be on the next agenda. Perhaps the document that you have, if we revises it, then we'll let you know that, you know, just in case.
Can you get a copy to the commissioner's if he revises it?
There's a revision, yes.
Okay, we'll put it on June 1st. Take a good look at it.
I was the one that opened the can. Can of worms. Anyhow, there was some, I, I'm not opposed to it. I won't say it's their body because the Budget Committee's heard this. I'm not opposed. I think having a policy is a good idea. Like Tracy said, we hadn't had a chance to look at it. I can see where there could be some real problems and some weaknesses in that. Again, it only applies to the mayor's department, just everybody under him. And if it's got the right guardrails on it, and it's handled appropriately, then it's probably okay. But again, I haven't read it. I'll be real glad for Bob to look through it and make sure everything's squared away and all that. But I guess the key thing is that it applies when we have disaster or emergency worldwide pandemic and stuff like that.
I'd like to see it to the point where proper, with proper guardrails, so to speak. And one thing we discovered through this whole thing is that you can get so much more done without distraction. Where Tracy's girls was consulting an account that she was a two, three-year deal. If we're lucky, good at that. And so, you know
Are you talking about at home?
Or in her lockdown area.
No. The portal we've got, it's just like saying, once you log it in, and you're logged into our security system, it's just like you're sitting at your desk.
Well, that might be fine if you've got grown kids and no dogs.
Kids.[1757.02]
I've got three kids and a dog.
Yeah. She pulled it off in a day. And I'm not saying weekly, maybe some language where if it gets to that point, you know, of course, you know, technically, we didn't, nobody knew anyway, but I'd refer to the rules.
I think having a policy, I think having a policy is very ideal, it's just what that policy says.
That's true.
And one of the things I mentioned there, right now, we're talking about, again, a global pandemic. But if it's not defined what it is, then it could be a rainy day, you know, or it could be a cold.
Snow day.
A snow day, it could be a snow day. So, we want to, you know, again, just very careful what these policies are.
Now, the boys ain't going to want to...
Hey, you can still work on snow days.
So, you're proposing to have your attorney to look at it, and if it meets with his approval, it goes on the agenda for approval of the full, full Commission?
And that's what the state's recommending, because nobody had one of these in place until, and so that's what the state's recommending. I don't know if Bob's had eyes on it or not.
I'm not sure, I've sent emails to Tammy, I did talk to Tammy, but I don't...
I think you have the rule to make sure that Bob and Betsy are good with it, and if there are any changes, I'll send it out.
Look at it.
If it is, it's Bob and Betsy written up, then I'll let them know.
So, we have any recommendations to do, and you should send them to Bob?
Yeah, maybe you have any, let me make sure he's got it first, that he's touched it, then if anybody has any change they want, then take the circumstances, Bob, and have a poor man not a bad option anyway.
And it only applies to the mayor, doesn't apply to the other offices, or the fee office holders, or the Sheriff's Department, or none of that, unless...
Is that going to be a question of Bob, too, that maybe the fee office holders maybe need to look at something in place, just for precautionary?
Well, you all legislate, if y'all have that county-wide policy, that's up to you all, y'all...
But we can't enforce it.
But now, that's the thing, how do you enforce it?
They shut, they shut this building down, they didn't, nobody called me and asked me, they, you? Nope, then nobody cared what I thought, they just shut it down.
But again, if they did, what do you do?
Right, what are you going to do? We got no authority over it all. Just, everybody read that real close, everybody read it real close.
Well, I'm just saying, could you make a suggestion, Jim, that they need to possibly look at having something in place, too?
We want a suggestion, they keep all our chief deputies at the same page, how about that? Wow, Bob ran there, though.
Remote.
Okay, we'll put it on June 1st, if there's any changes, you'll get a copy. Tracy, continue on.
Okay, and lastly, budget amendments. Most of them are self-explanatory, but I will just tell you a few things that are going on in the County General House, because that's where the majority of the amendments are. There are some adjustments to all of the insurance budgets, health, dental, life insurance budgets for the employees, because in the parent fiscal year, you might recall, there was a decrease in the cost. So, the majority of those are decreases in the budget. You will see some increases, and that just could be because an employee who didn't have insurance picked it up in this fiscal year, but overall, it's pretty safe. The revenues have been adjusted, based on what we expected this point going forward. Some of them look pretty good. There's probably about a twenty to twenty-five percent decrease in all the revenues that start with forty-three. Those are all the revenues that are related to the courts. Because, of course, the courts were the first thing that the state closed down as related to COVID. I've spoken with the office, and we're just not expecting much more revenue than we have right now. So, those budget amounts are, the proposed amendments will get all of those budgets to the point that what we have collected through March, is about ninety percent of the budget. And of course, we've got a couple months to go, but they're just now opening up, and I've been told, too, that they are significantly reducing their dockets because of social distancing and things like that. We're just not expecting much revenue, and the revenue was down, as it was. Through March, we had actually collected sixty-six percent of the budget. That's about ten percent less than it really should be if everything was optimal. So, there are reductions there, we're watching some other revenues to, and we'll have one more opportunity to address that in this fiscal year, as we move forward. The other amendments are things that you will recognize, and I don't, I don't think it involves any additional explanation, but of course, you're welcome to call me if you live over and have any questions. And I think that's all for the Budget Committee.
So, the disagreement is when, was, was cut because of the money flow coming in?
Yes.
Not, won't let twirl off the ice cream, but I'll go ahead and tell you, this is going to be the hardest budget I've ever sat through in all my years being in County Commission. I think everybody in the Budget Committee can tell you this, it's not going to be pretty, it's not good, we're going to have to burn some fund balance of our own money, fund balance, fortunately. We prepared for that by being conservative in the past, we have some fund balance, but we can't burn fund balance forever, but I wouldn't be looking for any wrapping paper and ribbons and stuff this year, because it's going to be tough, it's going to be tough.
I'll tell you, it's the worst year in six that I've been through, and I'm pretty good with money. I went home last Wednesday night with my head spinning.
That was right for the BOE presentation.
Yeah.
Well, we went through last Wednesday...
How much we cut, two-seventy?
Two-seventy, but I think it's a little bit more than that.
Found a little bit more than two-seventy.
Yeah.
Three-twenty, didn't improve that much, still not a very pretty figure.
It's, it's not, but, you know, we just have to ride and glide and see. COVID definitely has an effect, but I'll just be honest with you, Sheriff's Department too, last year's budget was knocking our socks off.
Internet sales tax, we're probably talking layoffs...
Sales tax, boom, man.
Sales tax is rolling. And I think we're actually getting the better advantage of it, because people that are normally going into, you know, Walmart, or some of these other box stores, they're not, they're ordering online, and it comes right back into Loudoun County that way. Internet sales tax has saved us this year.
Well, it made the pain less, I'll say that. I won't say we're saved, I don't think that's characterized.
There's still pain there.
If we were saved, we wouldn't be burning a million and a half dollars out of fund balance.
Stepping on a thumbtack instead of a nail.
There you go.
That's what the total amount was, a million and a half?
We don't know yet, we don't know yet. We may have to spend a million and a half out of fund balance, maybe a little...
That would be the amount that you are cutting over this year that would presently bring to a close?
That's how much we'll have to spend out of fund balance if we stay on the trajectory of...
Additional money?
If we'd have knew this was coming, would have looked at Sheriff's Department last year and said, there's no possible way. But, we didn't, and we did vote with Sheriff's Department thinking, that's where we're at.
And they've got eighty prisoners, and they're that many dead.
That's, that's the, the bigger...
So, after giving him all that money, now you're taking it away?
Oh, no, 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 we can't take it away. He's fully staffed, I mean, he's got eighty prisoners and eighty jailers, so, they're about down to one to one. No, we're taking nothing away from him at all.
In fact, you can't.
By law, we can't, once you give it, that's a maintenance of everything, with people.
My concern, I really have a concern about all of the cuttings that you're doing, how is that going to affect the operation of, of this county?
I would say, none. Most of the cuts were out of the increases. We're kind of like the federal government, don't really ever cut one year from here back. You take what they wanted this year, you cut that back. We're still at, I don't know how much now, but we're probably still at about a six-hundred-thousand-dollar increase, this year's budget over last year's budget.
Is that because the state is giving you that much more?
Take, take the three-hundred thousand out for the BOE, we're probably closer to three-hundred thousand in new spending this year. State's giving us nothing extra. They're giving us nine-hundred-one-thousand dollars that we're going to cannibalize every line item we can, to buy anything that they allow us to buy out of.
So, you've got nine-hundred thousand more dollars than, than the year that we're bringing to a close?
Only in capital, only, we can use it for...
Can only use it for certain things.
No construction.
No salaries, no red card expenses of any kind.
We're using it, we're upgrading, everybody, nobody, no employee of this county will have a computer over it, probably two years old after this, that's what they're really pushing. We're upgrading some of our servers, but at the same time, stuff in the clerk's office, you know, if it's a piece of equipment you need, now's the time. And so, we're going to share vehicles, you can buy emergency law enforcement equipment. We're actually going to do that one twice, one at the front end, one at the back end, and that'll save us, now that's one of the pennies we've robbed, not robbed, we've moved projects over into...
David, what is it?
General Fund, to hold on.
We gave him, what, what, thirty more cars?
No, it's, they...
Jails, these are jails.
Six years, five or six years.
Six years.
Yeah. And so, but we'll be able to do that on the front end, and then right before next fiscal year ends, do it again. This grant's very unique in the fact that the state of Tennessee is going to pay you, you send them what you want, they're going to send you the money.
We'll say, we'll say.
The state is sending money to the police.
Well, this to the county itself.
And that balance, that where there is no cut with the Sheriff's Department, is that what?
Well, no, we're moving the money that we can out of capital projects into General Fund to hold on, we'll do that. We're going to make this nine-hundred-one, we're going to try and use it, split it up for this year, as well as limit while we use out of capital projects for the twenty-one, twenty-two budget.
Not just in shares.
Into, into another fund, you switch categories.
Yeah, we're going to use that capital project...
Somebody's losing something somewhere, have to.
Well, the capital projects money, anything that we can, that grant from the state, if we can buy out of that, then we're going to move that money. Of course, now, the thing is, we only had about, what do we have in capital projects? Two-hundred thousand?
Two-hundred thousand.
We only had two-hundred thousand in our capital projects anyway, so, but that's two-hundred thousand we're saving. Well, as, as a budget, annual budget, we have about two-hundred thousand. So, if we'd had a million dollars for capital projects, we'd be really...
What's the endcoming amount this year?
The nine-hundred-one-eleven thousand.
See, the issue comes down here...
Seven-hundred thousand.
On capital only, capital projects only.
But it could not be used on specific things.
Let me help Harold out a little bit. If we could have took that nine-eleven and put it in the fund balance of the General Fund, we'd have been home free. But they put limits on what you could actually spend that money for. So, what we did is, we took stuff that we would normally spend money on in capital projects, took it out of that fund. So, that was somewhat of a saving.
Well, I can see why they did that, because what's happened, you switch money out to somebody else, like, who was it we cut here a while ago? Take it out, take it away from Hannah and put that money in there.
Harold, there were seven pennies that we came up with, and we tried to prioritize those pennies this year and next year, based upon what we felt would be recommendations to the full commission to be voted on, that would still maintain the level of current services for all of the counties.
Well, how can you remain with the same current services, whenever you've taken all this money away from?
We haven't took no money away from nobody.
No.
And cut nobody, yes.
I'll be anxious to see the budget.
And one other note, if you want to really have some cherry on top of your ice cream, you heard David mention that we're, we gleaned up about seven pennies, and y'all understand how the penny issue works, part of those seven pennies were the pennies that were going to build whatever we ever built someday. So, we won't be building anything ever now for a really, really long time, unless we go borrow money, raise taxes, or something to that effect. So, when Bo Carey's asking about, can we put it in the courthouse, well, we'll be lucky to get the people back in the courthouse. I don't want to be room for a lot of boxes in the courthouse, so, but the pennies that we had found previously that would have funded the courthouse annex, or whatever, they're going with this budget.
Should we bankrupt the county, though?
Well, I'm not arguing it's right or wrong, I'm just saying...
That was our option, bankrupt the county, lay people off in mass quantities, you know how many people we had to lay off in the county?
Is that what you're doing?
Is what's that, laying people off? No, I'm sorry.
No, 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 no.
It was use those pennies, or that's what we would have been down to, be either use the pennies that we shrouded up, or massive layoffs, or bankrupt the county, that was our three options, we used the pennies.
Harold, there was a report that came out from the UTU School of Economics from Governor Lee. Matt Bauer came up with the report, and we've had great, we've had growth for about three-point-nine percent over the last year. This year and next year, they're projecting that increase is going to go from three-point-nine percent down to one-point-nine percent. In the article, and it was a hundred and eighty-one pages in the, in the document I read, it mentioned that Tennessee now has a lot of money coming into the state, based on the economy of international and national businesses. And if we have problems with China and other countries, it may increase even more, a bigger problem for a lot of local entities to deal with in the future. So, we're facing things that we've never faced before whatsoever.
Yeah, we said that last year.
But this is real.
Seems like it's an annual thing that you think, you folks, some of the things that you're dealing with.
COVID has been unbelievable, and it's sad.
Well, I think our main goal, too, is to make sure that we maintain the services that we've been providing to the citizens, and just try to keep things going exactly where it is, without having to add any more burden onto the citizens, because we sure don't want to have to turn around and say, hey, we've got to have a property tax increase.
Chattanooga City...
This is not the title of this word.
Boy, you're not worried, since you don't have a job, we're going to raise your property taxes.
Chattanooga City, and it is requesting a thirty-four cent tax increase, and about forty-four cents, majority of that thirty-four cent increase, if it passes, will go for education. Now, you look at education, there are forty-five components in BEP. David Lipscomb came out with a report and said BEP is broken. Also, Tasser came out with a report in January of this year, and it made a comment very plainly, BEP is broken and it needs to be fixed. The state needs to pump one and a half billion dollars into it today, to equalize across the board, everybody for education, based upon BEP factors.
Well, I understand that, but...
It's crazy.
Since you mentioned education, what, they've had their budget in for, what?
Last week, last week.
They officially turned it in like...
Well, they, they redid their previous budget, yes.
The budget had a... What was their cut?
I think we're, we're, the Board of Education, I believe, is in good, good position at the moment, as far as cuts go. We had a percentage raise in there, that was put together in the budget before we had this process of the pandemic get started, so, you know, we'd been working on that kind of before spring break, and it was ready to go, then we leave, go on spring break, and when we come back...
You don't come back.
You don't come back. So, we amended the budget that we had...
You amended the Board of Education's proposed budget?
They voted to take out the...
That the superintendent presented to you.
That is correct. And so...
And now, he's speaking as the Board of Ed.
Now, the new budget...
He's Board of Ed, not County Commission, he's the Board of Education.
He's speaking for them.
I'm just telling you what...
They, they amended their budget, we didn't, they didn't.
The, the Board of Education said, it's not right to ask for this level of a raise at this time during these circumstances, we amended...
But you took the two cents away from the teachers?
No, no.
Maybe you get it, Washington.
Yeah, there was no raise last year, there was a step raise, but there wasn't a raise. So, that we had asked, the Board of Education had asked that there be a four percent raise, they took that out. They said, this is what we need to make our budget be balanced, three-hundred-and-twenty-thousand. Presented that to the Budget Committee, and we said, if you give the county employees a raise, we would like to be able to give the teachers an equivalent raise. And so, that's where we are at this moment. Nothing has been decided yet, they're still working on those numbers, but I will tell you...
So, actually, you're, you're, you're dealing with the budget that they presented to you, you haven't said, this is what we're going to present to full commission?
No, we only, the Board of Ed presents the budget to the Budget Committee, and then they look at those numbers and say, this is what we can do, or what we can't do. And then that, they present it to the full board. The Board of Ed will never present it to the full board.
Well, the commissioner of education presents it to the full after they get through working on it. So my question is, how much did you cut?
Now, he's, look at him as the director of school.
That's the reason I'm asking.
He's speaking to you as the director of school right now. He might be the assistant, but he's just a Harvey life assistant.
Yeah.
That's the reason I'm asking.
No, no one, no, the teachers will get their step raise at minimum.
Will get what?
The step raise, the raise that comes every year that's in their contract?
It's only a step raise, doesn't it?
No, it's in their contract.
The next big step from a budget standpoint is, I guess we may start just Wednesday.
Just trying to come up with $320,000.
Oh, no.
Then we start sending, and that's going to be the next. As we start answering the requests. We cut and trim, now where do we put the money to get it? And that's the next one. That's Wednesday, I correct you. So we're going to bring lunch Wednesday.
So you've cut the budget, and now you're looking for a place to?
Well, the Board has cut the request more than the budget, so to speak. Now, the one place that we could see one loss of service, we've had two departments come and ask for it. That's Kerry McKell, he's going to trace the lawyers. We're not going to split those. That is the hardest decision. We're fixing to have to come back again originally. It's there, but it's something we have to address again saying that if you look over a two- or three-year period, what the effect on the fund balance is going to be. And so I think Wednesday, we'll have a much clearer picture after we see more of the revenue. We're putting the revenue to as to what effect it will have on.
That way the fund balance is going down, down, down. And then when it's all gone, what do you?
Well, we can't let it get all gone.
Is that where you are now?
We're $7 million right now. So we can burn a year of a million bucks or whatever, or two if we have to. But at some point, we hope that our revenues will come back and increase.
That kind of fund balance, why are you cutting?
Well, if we don't do something, it'll be gone really quick.
So you're planning for years down the road?
We got always a plan of years.
We're at a dollar eight. Closest to us is Knox County. They're at a dollar 98. They're at a million dollar a piece penny. I'd love to have that. We could lock them. Monroe County is fixing to go through the roof, plus the wheel tax. I think the way we budgeted and the way we've been conservative, when the time comes, Henry and Jeremy, I didn't say the time's here. When the time comes, we do have to adjust the tax rate. The difference is going to be, you know, maybe an eight to 12 instead of a 35.
Jeremy, headline, mayor advocating the property tax.
Whoa, don't you put that in there and make fun of them.
That's when the time comes, and I still think we're several years out of there.
But we have growth. We always have to remember, every year we grow, too. The better our growth is, the better we are. But let me go back and hit the school board while we're in this. I just want to know why we're not going home. The Board of Education has asked for $320,000 one level. To give them $320,000, we have to give them half a million. Because Little River City gets 35% of it.
Well, that's because they've got 67% of the kids.
Well, Little River City has 35%. Yes, that's the BEP formula. The second request level they made, as Mr. Tinker was saying, if the county gives its employees a 2% raise, they would like for us to give them the money to give their employees a 2% raise. That takes their budget request $800,000.
Plus the 35.
To give them $800,000, we have to give 1.23 million new dollars to them because Little River City gets 35% of that. So they get 35%.
I understand that. That's the way it's been.
Well, I'm just giving you what the big numbers are right there. So we would have to come up with a half million dollars additional funding, which would be four pennies. About five, because it's just worth about $100,000. So five pennies. At a million dollars, you're going to have to have ten.
I understand that process, but you've got to remember for the last two years, you as budget committee members has cut Little River City's six cents, six pennies, if you want to call it that, from what it was that previous year.
We added six pennies to their property tax, and they're still 22 pennies below 10.
Right, the property tax, so.
We equalized. We didn't write.
Harold, they're getting $144,000.
They'll let to them with.
I've told him several times. I promise you, I've told him the same thing.
You got to be aware of what I'm doing down here, trying to let you do all of that.
You're letting them pay 22 cents less than the county taxpayers pay.
And they're getting $144,000 last year from AFT funds.
AFT? And I hadn't even thrown in the whole juvenile center that's 75% Little River City's because I think it's time to go. I think it's time to disband.
So moved.
I'll tell you what, I'll call for the German.
All right, listen, Jeremy.